Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. I am Heather Pepley, clerk for the city of Manistee. The city council's March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one work session being conducted remotely where all members of the city council are in separate locations and not at the city hall council chambers will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this work session is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels one eighty-nine and one ninety and available at ManisteeTV.org. City council and city staff will have video and audio available for this work session. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the city council, the city manager and the city clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the work session.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Work session, uh, public comments on work session related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the city clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. Work session, uh, discussion topics for those who don't have an agenda tonight are discussion on new process for redistricting, uh, in Michigan. Discussion on Manistee area public schools bond issue, bond proposal. Heather?
Okay, so I have telephone number ending in zero, one, six, four. If you have a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. Again, that's telephone number zero, one, six, four. Okay, hearing nothing, um, let's see. I have a few other people joining. I don't know if you're here with the school, um, or if you have a comment. You can press star nine to raise your hand. Or just go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not hearing any public comments, mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to discussion of the new process for redistricting in Michigan. Who's taking that? Who's taking the lead on that?
Um, we have Rhonda Lang here with us.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rhonda Lang and I serve as a commissioner on the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, also known as MICRC. And I reside in Reed City, which is in Osceola County. Before I get started with my brief presentation, I would just like to thank Mayor Roger Zelinski and members of the city council for allowing me the opportunity to give public comments regarding the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. I would also like to thank Heather Pepley for coordinating this presentation and helping me with the slides this evening. So Heather, if you could please put the first slide up.
Sure, give me one second here. I will share my screen.
Thank you.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay.
The presentation tonight is just going to give a brief history about the Michigan Redistricting Commission and also a little information on how to give public comment and, uh, the process of redistricting itself. So if we could go to slide two. In two thousand and eighteen, Michigan voters passed proposal two, a ballot initiative for voters and not legislators to take responsibility for nonpartisan redistricting and created the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. Our commission is comprised of thirteen randomly selected Michigan residents, which includes four Democrats, four Republicans and five independents. The MICRC is responsible for redistricting the US Congressional, Michigan House and Michigan Senate districts. If we could go to the next slide. To ensure fair, free and impartial maps, the MICRC is required to solicit public input before drawing any redistricting plan for the Michigan House, Senate or US Congressional districts through a minimum of ten public hearings across the state. Once those maps are drawn, then we have to submit them for public comment again and are required by the constitution to have an additional five meetings for public hearing and public input on the maps. Next slide, please. Per the Michigan constitution, the purpose for the public hearings are first to inform the public about the redistricting process. We want to share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission and to solicit information from the public about potential redistricting plans for US Congressional, Michigan House and Michigan Senate districts. This public comment can consist of, uh, potential communities of interest. If somebody knows of a community of interest, we ask that they submit that to us. People are also allowed to submit their own maps if they want to go online and draw their own lines for districts. We're more than welcome to look at those and take those into consideration as well as any comments or questions they may have about the commission itself. Last slide. So we welcome your ideas as well as the ideas of your residents to increase awareness and engagement in Michigan's redistricting process. If you have comments, you can email them to us at redistricting@michigan.gov. They can also be mailed directly to us at MICRC PO Box three oh three one eight Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine oh nine. We do have weekly meetings on Thursdays where people can sign up to do public comment. And we are also in the process, pardon me, process of scheduling public hearings. So people can have the opportunity to speak at those also. If you would like more information about the MICRC or the upcoming public hearings, please visit www.michigan.gov/MICRC. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to give you a brief description of what we're doing on the commission. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Also, do they have any questions?
Ms. Lang, has the, as the committee actually started working on the redistricting maps?
We have not. Uh, we cannot start working on the maps until we hold the ten public hearings. Uh, that's vital in the constitution. We're supposed to get public input from at least the ten constitutional hearings before we start the actual drawing of the maps.
Would this be considered a cost, one of the, the hearings?
No, uh, we are.
Informational?
This is strictly informational to get the word out there. We found that quite a few people hadn't heard about us yet, even though we met for the first time in September of two thousand and twenty. So we're trying to get the word out there. We're currently discussing, uh, potential places to hold our hearings. Uh, we're also in the process of discussing, um, how many hearings to do. We may do more than the ten required. Uh, nothing is confirmed yet as far as places at this time. That's something we're going to be looking into again this week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your time and explaining everything to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next discussion on Manistee area public school bond proposal. Superintendent Ron Stolman, you're up.
Okay, I'm here. I'm wait, uh, will the presentation be provided?
I would be happy to provide that if you would, uh, like me to share my screen again.
Please, thank you.
Give me one second to get yours opened up.
Take all the time you need.
Okay, can everybody see that again?
I can see it.
Okay, just let me know when you want me to proceed to the next slides.
All right, thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for, uh, allowing me to be part of your meeting and, uh, be on your agenda. Really appreciate it. I want to introduce Jim Thompson, uh, board president is, uh, with me online here. So thank you, Jim, for being here also. Uh, as you, uh, as you can see, uh, the maps two thousand and twenty is, uh, has a one, uh, in it now. Uh, as you are aware that, uh, the Board of Education last year, uh, suspended, uh, going for a bond uh, last May, uh, because of pandemic and uncertainty. And so, uh, we've, uh, we've come back and we have basically, uh, the same project with a couple of nuances to consider. And, um, so talking about the Chippewa edge and our vision for facilities. Next slide, please. Uh, we will, uh, review the scope of the project. We have it, get an understanding, uh, of the impact of the, uh, bomb proposal, both for the community and, uh, what it means financially. Uh, we'll discuss the importance of community-wide commitment for a stable educate, uh, educational foundation. And, uh, we're here and, uh, to hear your voice and, uh, make sure that you, you hear what we have to say. And of course, uh, if you have thoughts, questions or something to share, I encourage you to do so, please. Next slide, please. Uh, just to refresh, uh, how we got here, project to the history. Uh, back in two thousand and sixteen, there were over a hundred and twenty, uh, surveys. They turned it like interview surveys uh, that was conducted by one individual. Some of you may have participated in that process. Uh, we received, uh, what we're, a lot of feedback related to perception of the district, uh, the role of the district in the community. Um, you know, what the next twenty years may look like, uh, in the district and, and just got some excellent feedback from that process. And, uh, we still go to that SWOT analysis and that information, uh, as we continue to, uh, review how we do, how we do things. And that feedback has been really valuable. Uh, we've really improved on our communications from the district as, uh, as one of the feedback and, uh, just doing as many partnerships as we possibly can so break down the silos in the district and get engaged in the community. Two thousand and seventeen, uh, we had a facility assessment completed. We brought on, uh, Chrisman, uh, construction to help us do that and also Tower Pinkster Architect Firm to help us review our facilities. Uh, eighteen nineteen, we put the feedback that we received from two thousand and sixteen of the facility assessment. And with this process, uh, we have to, uh, present to treasury. And treasury requires a third party to do an enrollment projection, um, so that, uh, we can qualify for treasury. They don't want you to build too many square footage, uh, too much square footage for per student or underbuild, uh, per square footage, uh, related to our enrollment projections. Excuse me. Um, so we developed and outlined the needs of a district and, uh, we've put together two thousand and twenty-one, we've put together a, uh, bond proposal. Talked about it being delayed and, uh, the proposal delivers a properly scaled, quality educational environment that serves the needs of all students and the teachers in our district. Next slide, please. Project impact, you know, we want to provide, uh, our youngest learners a safe and accessible and efficient classrooms. Uh, this, uh, project is really focused on our youngest students in the district. We want to equip our teachers with an environment, um, and, and tools that they need to impact students for their success. And, uh, for our future, you know, we want, you know, we're really focused on a, a sustainable educational foundation for the future of the community. And we are really focused on, um, you know, looking out ten and twenty years, uh, as we related to facilities and operations. We're, we're really doing some forecast planning, um, as we move forward. Right, next, uh, that's the vision. Next slide. This is the, the project. It's very similar. I've presented the city council before, so we'll start over, uh, the middle school, high school site. Uh, that is, uh, you know, the bond pass is nineteen ninety-nine, opened, uh, a year or so after that. Um, so we're looking at, uh, you know, a building that's twenty years old, uh, still in really great shape and serving the needs of the district. Uh, currently there are grades six through twelve, so there's a full middle school now and a full high school in that facility. And, uh, what we've, uh, proposed here for this building, we, we've talked about a secure entry and, uh, we went ahead and, and completed that last year. And so if you've come into our building recently, you are coming into the front doors and you have to turn right and go right into the office before you were able to access the commons area. And now that door moving forward into the commons area is locked in that you'll be screened, uh, in the office, uh, for, uh, coming into the building. Successful project. Uh, we're really happy how it turned out. Um, we also added new doors, uh, to, uh, the academic wings. On each side of the library in the commons area is, uh, two sets of doors on each side that access the academic wings. We replaced those doors and, uh, we have a release system, uh, for those doors. If we're needed to lock down, uh, the magnets release the doors if they're propped open. They're usually closed and locked. And, uh, we've added those already. In the diagram, you see the pickup drop off, uh, improvements. Uh, we did seal that, uh, parking lot last year. We put new signage in that parking lot area, adjusted some parking there and also, uh, uh, made a designated, uh, bus pickup area and that's the smaller square, um, blue area. Uh, we improved that area with ceiling and some, um, paint and signage so that we have separation, much better separation of the buses and, uh, the parent pickup and drop off and student, uh, parking. Uh, so we've really, uh, helped manage that, uh, traffic flow there, uh, with those improvements. But what we are looking at, uh, in that building is, uh, the, a new roof. So we have a twenty-year-old roof that, uh, the warranty is expiring on. And the lighter yellow area over the academic area would be the suggested, uh, section of roof that we would replace, uh, with the, with this project. We're talking about, uh, twenty-year-old doors and hardware, a lot of wear and tear on, on those, uh, items. Uh, we're looking at replacing and improving, uh, the doors and hardwares where needed in that building. And I mentioned the roof replacement and, uh, we're also looking at constructing a dedicated middle school gym. That is the bright yellow, uh, box on the diagram. And, uh, that is, uh, a low, that will be located right, uh, alongside of the existing gym. And if you're familiar with the back of the building there, there's a deep, you know, drop off, a good grade there. And it would allow, uh, a basement to be in there as, uh, a ground, uh, garden level, ground level. And, uh, we were looking at, uh, locker rooms, uh, in the, uh, lower level. And we're looking for some storage space, uh, in that space area too. I'm just putting out there, we have these, uh, track, uh, pits and they are from the pole vault and, uh, high jump. And we, uh, would like to have a heated storage area for those expensive, uh, items. Maybe some other extra space may be available too. Any questions with the middle school, high school scope?
I have, I have a quick question on the middle school and high school. So are you redoing that front entryway again with this bond proposal?
No, I, I'm sorry. It wasn't clear enough. We just went ahead and what we were going to do with the bomb proposal. We, we, uh, security, uh, was a priority for that building, so we just did that already.
Okay, and weren't the doors in the hardware updated, um, just a few years ago with the security? System?
No, uh, like all the classroom doors, uh, no, uh, that we were able to, um, uh, get locks on those doors on the base for emergency, but the hardware was not replaced.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I had on that one.
All right. Uh, moving on to, uh, Jefferson, uh, we're looking at demolishing, bringing that, uh, nineteen fifty-four building down. Um, it's currently serving kindergarten through second grade. Um, we initially talked about green space and, uh, maps, uh, athletic fields potentially. And, uh, we, uh, put together a committee, uh, Jefferson, uh, committee, Jefferson. Committee is made up of neighborhood individuals and, uh, people of interest for that piece of property that want to provide some, uh, potential recommendations to the Board of Education for its use. Um, I really appreciate, uh, the help and the support from this committee. We've talked about having, uh, a, a park-like environment and, uh, in, in, we've been provided with some drawing suggestions and some, uh, minimal ideas for that space that would, uh, you know, hold the cost of maintenance on that, uh, site. So that is a possibility, but the committee also opened up the idea of, uh, uh, looking at this as buildable home sites. And, uh, the, the neighborhood committee is really, uh, you know, focused on, uh, maintaining the, uh, style of housing and the integrity, uh, in the neighborhood. Um, so they're, you know, wanted to like housing in that area. Uh, we did consult with our attorney about maybe some deed restrictions and, uh, we've hired Spicer to, uh, survey the property and, uh, let us know, uh, I think there may be some utilities under the property. And, um, they may have some suggestions how to break that, uh, piece of property up for buildable lots. Uh, we, uh, working on scheduling our next Jefferson committee meeting, uh, for next week. Uh, Spicer has completed their survey and I would like them to meet, uh, with our committee, uh, as soon as possible. So those are the possibilities of, uh, of Jefferson. I just want to reiterate that the building would come down, the district would maintain anything that was left on the, on the grounds. And, uh, we'll continue to work with the Jefferson committee and, uh, the board as we move forward. Jefferson, Mick, you were, you're part of that committee. Any, any things to add to that?
Uh, no, and, and again, as, as part of that committee, I, I certainly do, um, support the affordable housing, uh, lots in that area versus, uh, you know, additional green space. And, and again, I hope Spicer will come up and, you know, again, I think having, you know, a small playground area perhaps and, and maybe, uh, you know, some area for park or recreation. But I think for the preponderance of that lot going to, uh, affordable, single-family homes, uh, is ideal for Manistee on two fronts. Uh, number one, um, we need, we need that housing in the community. And number two is it will generate tax revenues that support not only the school but the city as well.
Yeah, and on the diagram that you see, you, uh, we've added Sands Park to that. And, uh, you know, Sands Park being in that vicinity and, uh, the district and the city being in partnership with that. We do realize in proximity of Jefferson, uh, is Sands Park. So, um, I'm really pleased where the Jefferson committee is right now, um, thinking, uh, about the housing situation. And, uh, there is a realtor that, in the neighborhood that is also involved and asking him, is there a market for, uh, you know, this like type of housing? And yes, for sure, uh, there is, uh, need for housing of all realms in the community. And, uh, this area could serve a, um, help serve some of the purpose that's missing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Back when I, I heard two for, two different phrases here. I heard you say, um, housing market, like maybe sell lots to people, build houses. And I heard the word affordable housing. What, is there a difference? I mean, what are we talking about here? Sell lots or we have a HUD project?
No, no, I, um. What's that?
Uh, I was gonna say, we weren't addressing this as a HUD project. This is strictly to be independently built homes.
Okay, I heard you say affordable housing.
Affordable, well, that's what I mean. Affordable is, is hopefully, you know, something other than, you know, a half a million dollars, you know?
I just need to be clarified. Some people might, might misconstrue what was said there.
And, you know, and again, part of that is scoping size, you know, allowing perhaps for an eleven-hundred foot, eleven-hundred square foot home to be built. Uh, you know, again, that's, you know, what Housing North is recommending, uh, that we look at, uh, having, um, opportunities for, um, smaller homes to be built in order to, you know, keep the prices down. Definitely, single-family privately owned homes.
Yeah, and, um, and Mr. Bachman, I, I think the board is focused on the, on, on that neighborhood also. And, uh, you know, like housing, like I said. And, uh, speaking with a realtor, there seems to be a market for all levels of housing in the community. And, uh, and the district is not in the business of any, of development, uh, but they would, uh, you know, provide, uh, lots, uh, for sale. And hopefully that, uh, you know, the type of zoning that there is, uh, you know, continued respected and move forward. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I'm, I think the, the, the better use for that property is housing. Um, we want to attract young families. Um, we need places for those families to live, so. I think a better use of that property is affordable housing. When I say affordable, I mean, houses that are not five hundred thousand like Mick said, but houses that you can work here, live here, play here, uh, and afford housing. So I'm all for that. I, I hope that we go that way. I guess, Mr. Stolman, would it, uh, be, be, uh, beneficial for some of us to attend that meeting that you're at? And, um, push that?
Well, I think Mick's representing, uh, that opinion very well at the meeting. And I think, uh, you know, Mick has, uh, helped, uh, support the idea of, uh, Spicer, uh, looking at it and seeing what possibilities there. So I, I think, uh, your message is at the table very clearly, um, but you're more than welcome to attend.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, uh, no other questions. I'll move on to, uh, Kennedy. Uh, Kennedy, a little bit different story. Um, we're looking at, uh, using this building for pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. Uh, there's a lot of square footage in the building that's underutilized. It's not, uh, in, uh, condition that all that square footage is not necessarily conducive to class, elementary classroom. But that building, um, nineteen sixty-seven, I believe, uh, was, uh, extremely well-built. Uh, as the architect and construction Chrisman said, it has good bones. It's a solid steel and block building and, uh, it can be reused, uh, for, uh, elementary, uh, with a full renovation, which saves the, uh, a great deal of money per square foot for construction. And it, it's a good site and it, uh, serves the needs, uh, that we will have for a long time. And, uh, with that comes the demolishing of the nineteen twenty-seven building. Um, secure entry and check-in with academic wings, so we have a secured building. Uh, we want to update, modernize, uh, educational, um, standards that are in the building. Uh, of course, we'll come with a dedicated bus and parking area and an updated pickup and drop-off area for parents. And we'll be able to utilize the, uh, the playground in Sands Park. And we'll probably, uh, add a little playground closer to the building for our youngest, uh, students. And, uh, so we'll clean up a lot of congestion and traffic, uh, related to, uh, beginning of school and dismissal. And, um, and the full renovation of that building will allow four classrooms, uh, per grade level and, uh, a couple of rooms each for our preschool program. And there'll be an addition that added to the building for a cafeteria that needs to be on the main floor and a, uh, new kitchen that will be, uh, provided for the building. I have over seven hundred students in the building, right around there. And, uh, and we have a lot of space around us, uh, for those kids. Any, uh, any questions related to, um, Kennedy?
I have a question on, on this building. Um, the building that's being used now was built in nine, I don't even know if you can answer this question, was built in nineteen sixty-seven. There was no discussion at the time or that the other one next to it needed to come down? Or has there been a bond proposal that has went through that had this to be demolished in it?
Um, no, that's a great question. Um, the, a bond proposal had it included to come down. And there was, uh, from my recollection of, uh, history lessons, it, uh, it, it was not that band, that bond did not pass with it included. A scaled back bond, uh, was presented to the community. There was discussion about potential future use of that building and it passed without it being in the bond.
Since nineteen sixty-seven?
Yeah, there's been no other, uh, the nineteen ninety bond, ninety-nine bond, uh, was the last bond that passed. So that would have been, uh, that, that, nothing has passed since that time.
Okay. I, I just, I'm confused just because we're talking about, you know, demolishing Jefferson and then cleaning up Kennedy. I'm just confused on why they would never put that tearing down the old Kennedy when they built the new one. You know what I mean? Like, why was there not funds? Why they just let it sit there? And I don't even know if it was in use. This is like way before my time. I'm just curious.
Yeah, the last time it was you. Yeah, the last time it was used is my understanding, the city council used it as, uh, uh, the city building was being remodeled. And that was the last tenants of the building. There's always thought that it may be a historic building and, uh, that it needed to be, uh, preserved or not included in the bond. And so the next bond that went before and that passed did not include, uh, the demolition of that building.
Okay.
But, but no, Mike and I have one follow-up was. You know, we, we've been experiencing, you know, very high construction costs as of late. And, uh, is there been any thought about what, uh, adjustments in, um, the? The proposal would be made if, uh, if after the, the bond passed, um. The money wouldn't stretch to get you what you're looking for?
Yeah, so, um, just the year delay, um, we've had to recalibrate and go back to treasury. So they had, we had to, you know, re-cost the whole project, return to treasury and, uh, to re-qualify, uh, for the bond program. So the process of repricing this project has occurred. It is more expensive than it was last year, as, as you're suggesting, uh, but the interest rates are more favorable than they were last year. So if they're nearly offsetting each other at this time, uh, but delaying it, uh, it, it is going to cause, it will be problematic. So if there inflation or, or anything that occurs that affects the interest rate and the cost of materials and labor. Uh, this, this could be much more expensive. So that we're, we're kind of in a sweet little spot right now.
Okay.
Uh, Madison is the last building. Uh, right now, we authorize, uh, MGLVA. It's a, uh, cyber academy. It, uh, I think it's one of the largest, um, um, charter schools in the state. Uh, they have their offices, uh, located at Madison. They're taking up about four and a half rooms or so. And also right now is our GSRP, our, our federally funded, uh, preschool program. And we also have a tuition-based preschool program in that building. And, uh, Central Wellness rents, uh, some space, uh, for their autistic program. And, uh, the ISD has some programming and they utilize, uh, the building also. Um, so it's a viable building, uh, in that part of town and, uh, uh, we would like to continue to, uh, utilize it. And, and partner, uh, as much as we can with that building, uh, but it, it's, needs a new roof and it needs a new, uh, you know. HBA system in their boiler and, uh, you know, fresh air system and so forth. So that's what we're looking to have in that building. Also moving central office out of the Kennedy Elementary for full utilization of that building. And we would be relocated, uh, at Madison.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, are we going to know, it's May fourth that we're, that this is going to come before the voters, right?
Yes.
Uh, are we going to know before them what the decision is going to be for that space? Or, uh?
Jefferson space? Yeah, that's what we would like to, uh, have a recommendation, uh, for the Board of Education in April.
Okay, I think that's going to be very critical to the voters.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
It's a linchpin. Yeah.
It is. And, uh, that, that's why I think you see us, uh, we got that feedback and we put together this committee. And I think we're headed in the right direction, um, on, uh, on a proposal for the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, so that's the scope of the work. Uh, the next page, we'll start talking some, uh, financial, uh, impact of this.
Mr. Stolman?
Yeah.
Before you go on, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
The, if this proposal passes, that, uh, brick, brick, it's a big, big, big building by, uh. The school will be tore down. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, uh, the first bullet on that, uh, uh, Kennedy or the pre-K elementary building is demolished, the nineteen twenty-seven building. And we will be, uh, putting a playground in that spot and part of the, uh, addition for the new kitchen, uh, so we'll need that spot. That's probably where we will start.
Good news.
Yeah.
Hear that?
Yeah, I know it's been a focus of the city and, uh, we're, uh, um, have it on the top of our list. E-Even on our board agenda, uh, for this project, I have it labeled as old, old high school. Just to keep the focus for the Board of Education that, that, that building is a priority for our community.
Yeah, and, and you could really mention, it's, it's literally the largest bladed facility in Manistee.
There's no doubt about that.
I just have one other question that, out of curiosity.
Sure, Roger.
If this bond is approved, um, who has control over how the money's spent? And doesn't, does it have to be spent on what we're voting for or can it be spent on other things?
No, it's, uh, very specific, um, kind of referred them to the high school bucket. And, uh, so the ballot language, uh, will be specific on where that money can be spent.
Okay.
I've got one more question about the, the Madison building.
Yeah.
So a few years ago, when we switched, we moved all the kids around and then moved them to the high school in Kennedy and kind of got. Second, third, fourth grade out of Madison. I'm pretty sure I heard we did that because the building wasn't suitable, like it wasn't, you know, it needed a lot of repairs. So why are we still keeping it functioning if it, if it needs so much work?
Um, the, uh, as one of the smaller buckets of funds there, uh, it's a small building. And, um, the dependability of the, uh, heating system and the need for roof replacement of the two major projects there. It's still a viable space.
Okay.
Yep.
I, well, I guess my question is, why did we move them out of that? Because this, it seems to me like some of the classrooms are pretty overcrowded when we did that.
So I'm, I'm not sure. I, I wasn't, I wasn't part of that decision, I believe. Was it, kindergarten was in the building, uh, when I was here.
Okay.
And we've gone from like fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred students, uh, down to thirteen forty-four in the last five years. So we have a declining enrollment related to mainly birth rates in, in our community and, uh, not a lot of, um, new family move in. Aging, aging community too.
One more reason to have good housing for young people.
There you go. Yep, and we, uh, I will, as you see, we're going to save money for ourselves in the community for right sizing. Having the right square footage, um, uh, per student, uh, will be helpful for operations too. All right, next slide, please. Okay, the current bond, uh, drops off in nine years and that was funding, um, the high school, middle school. And, uh, this is some information related to, uh, keeping all the buildings, uh, up and running. And, uh, what the potential cost will be. So the facilities assessment, two thousand seventeen. Uh, maintaining a, all of the buildings and, um, and getting them to, uh, you know, where we would like them to be, forty-eight million dollars over ten years. And that jumps to sixty-eight million. It's covered sixty-three million, uh, over a twenty-year period of time. Um, consolidating our elementary infrastructure is outlined in the bond scope. Uh, would save the district about twenty-one million dollars over the next twenty years. And, uh, as, as we heard, uh, construction costs grow each year that we wait. And our aging facilities needs are quickly outpacing, um, our budgets. Next slide, please. This is, um, the cost of the project is just under thirty-one million dollars. We're talking about an increase of, uh, two point six five mils. And, uh, which will bring the total, uh, uh, mill collection at four point seven. And as you can see from the table, um, just some general information, uh, your home's fair market value, uh, has a list of numbers. And then it'll, the next, uh, blacklist of numbers is our year, yearly impact on, on that value of a home. And then it's a monthly impact, uh, in the green column. The blue lines represent, I know the year line, uh, on the bottom is hard to see, but it's nineteen ninety-nine. The community voted for a four-mill increase and, uh, that building was built. And, uh, as, uh, that debt has been paid off, uh, it has decreased, decreased the amount of mills that needs to be collected to pay for that. Also, the district has refinanced three times, uh, to help save money. The most recent, uh, refinance was, uh, finished up this year. And, uh, on the nine-year term, uh, refinancing was able to save eight hundred thousand dollars on the remaining debt. Um, so a nice savings on a, on a nine-year term. Where the green line starts, that is, um, you know, if this were to be approved, uh, that represents four point seven total mills. And, uh, the forecasting of, uh, that mill, uh, diminishing to be collected, same reason, uh, the nineteen ninety-nine, uh, bond decreased. Uh, less, uh, um, mills to be collected to pay off the debt. And, uh, and the idea that, uh, maybe, uh, uh, housing will be increased like it has for the ninety-nine. And, uh, so we'll be collecting less debt. Any question on, on the money graph related here? There is a, uh, on our website, um, you will find a calculator where you can put in your taxable value for your home. And, uh, then it'll calculate, uh, on that amount that you provided. All right, no questions. We can go to the next slide. Education in our community. Uh, go ahead. That's good. Next slide. I, I like this slide because it kind of tells a story. And, uh, the top bracket, um, uh, well, the purpose is to do some comparisons here. So you see the debt, uh, collected for, uh, school purpose in our neighboring districts. Um, we're, uh, we're at two point zero five to be collected next year. And, uh, we're showing a two point six five increase, total of four point seven. You can see we're Bear Lake, K and D, and Onakama are compares, comparing. And, uh, you can see, uh, we, we have nearly three times the amount of students, um, that were, uh, educating. And providing facilities for than the other districts, so, um, that, our, our cost is extremely low per student. Uh, the chart down below, um, now we're looking at districts, uh, that are neighbors. And, um, and we, we are competitive for school of choice. We're competitive for, uh, developers. We're competitive for, uh, families to move. And so we, we've added Benzi, who recently passed a, a small item. Luddington, who recently passed a hundred million dollar issue, but, uh, uh, we have, uh, they have the luxury of consumers' power. Um, being in their district. We have Macy County Central. And Cadillac is another neighbor. Spring Lake, um. Spring Lake has been used by us and others because it seems to be kind of that exemplary, uh, example or community that, uh. Um, that would be deemed as a successful community. And so we've used that also in Fremont, uh, kind of on a similar basis. Uh, we have always found ourselves, uh, kind of like those communities. And also the enrollment, uh, kind of meets, uh, in the neighborhood of where we are too. And, uh, you know, just reflecting, if you've been to the elementary facilities, um, at Bear Lake, K and D, and Onakama. Uh, compared to ours, I, I think, uh, I think you find that they're, they're maintaining and keeping up, uh, with new facilities and improvements. Any question on these comparison graphs? All right, let's look at the next slide. Why do we compare, do the comparison? I, I mentioned it a little bit, nineteen ninety-six, um, it's right. I think just prior to that, maybe a year or two, uh, proposal A passed. And which, uh, in, uh, created a change in how schools are, are funded. Uh, they were funded by local taxes quite a bit before then, and now they are, uh, funded, uh. Uh, mainly by sales tax and some other, um, uh, resources, uh, from the state of Michigan. So in, um, about twenty percent of our, our funding comes from local taxes, uh, for operations and, and mostly from the state of Michigan. But, uh, ninety-six, uh, we, uh, experienced a school of choice. Um, and it really, uh, made, uh, districts think about marketability. And, um, that is something definitely to consider, uh, in these times. MAPS twenty twenty vision positions our district to capture and retain families seeking quality educational resources. All right, any questions on school of choice and competitiveness, uh, for students and families? And, uh, which relates to businesses and developers and, and the whole realm is a competitive environment. All right, next slide, please. Uh, what's Plan B? Um, you know, without the bond, you know, we're, we're delaying or, uh, plugging along. On the critical safety and air quality upgrades that will need to be made over the years. And, and the air quality is something that we've been working on, um, since last summer. And, uh, making some adjustments and improvement in our filtration systems. And, um, um, also considering, uh, consolidation as we have a declining enrollment as our projections, uh, suggest. Uh, that, uh, we may be consolidating, uh, more grade levels and, and, uh, moving around a little bit to, uh, meet, uh, sufficient, uh, efficient operation practices. And, uh, we just do not have our, uh, our largest building, uh, retrofitted for the purpose of elementary. And determining how to rescale our amenities that which include our athletics and our media center and community space needs and, and, uh, grade levels. And, um, I'm just worried about that and, uh, you know, we, we're very proud of our small class sizes in our elementary and our high schools. And offering of, uh, um, you know, AP courses and the multiple of, uh, uh, variety of things students have access to. Um, as, even as we become a smaller district by students, um. Uh, we, we just want to maintain all of those offerings and provide those services that, uh, that are important to students and families. And, uh, we, we, we don't want to be, uh, compromised on those, but, uh, we're just concerned, um, if our facilities become, uh, you know. Deeply cutting into our operations, uh, cost, uh, there's possibility. Next slide, please. You know, why education matters, you know, just, uh, you know, outside of, uh, you know, if you have, uh, if you have students or children that utilize the, uh, district. Or if, or if you don't and, uh, you know, a good district with, uh, uh, you know, the resources, the facilities that are needed. Uh, obviously, uh, can, uh, raise, uh, uh, property values. It keeps our families in our community. Uh, it attracts economic development. I know when developers come into communities, uh, they are looking, uh, for some pillars. And, and see how the community has, uh, supported them. Public safety, which has been a, a great job, is one of those. Uh, how, uh, seniors and the services of, uh, health and, and hospital. And, uh, we're, we, we have great things happening with that. Um, and, and education and, uh, uh, facilities is another thing developers look at. If, if it is a, a viable, uh, educational environment, um, for, uh, development. Uh, of course, it provides a workforce for area businesses and develops students to be productive citizens. Um, it's just, as, as I'm sure you can agree, you know, this is, is an extremely valuable part of a successful community. Next slide. And that, that's it. I just, uh, want to provide you some information. Uh, more information, uh, will be coming in the form of a mailer. And, uh, we know that, uh, absentee ballots, uh, process start soon. So we want to, uh, make sure our information is getting out in a timely way, uh, as those, uh, uh, start being, uh, uh, processed. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of slides ago, you were, if we were talking about what would happen if the bond issue didn't pass. And modify, um, the educational opportunities. If the, but if it does pass, what additional educational opportunities are you going to be able to offer students? We've heard a lot about the building and infrastructure, but not a lot about that. So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
That's a good question. And, uh, a- as, uh, hiring teachers with multiple certifications, uh, may be costly, a little bit more. Uh, the elective opportunities, uh, so we're looking at quality instructors that we can hire. Uh, we continue to invest in educational resources, curriculum and, uh, you know. And what band equipment and support for our arts. And just mostly the continue the things that we value. But improve on the equipment and resources for that process.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I got a question.
I'll muddle through that, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a question. On your backup plan, what's what's the what's Plan B for the old Kennedy building? If if this doesn't pass?
You know, we will have to talk about that. And we know that it's a it's a situation that needs to be addressed and.
I mean, at what point does it become a safety issue? I mean, it's.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, so but I can I, that is a board decision on how to spend money to do that. So they're well aware of that and know that it needs to be dealt with.
What's, do you know what the cost is to tear it down?
I I don't have that exactly because it's determined on what. You know, there's an elevator that's attached between the two buildings. So that the elevator would have to be relocated to be support the floors and Kennedy. And so if that does come down without doing anything to Kennedy, it would be more expensive. To the district, so we're eight hundred thousand or so. But I hate throwing a number out there because I'm just not exactly certain, depending on the circumstances and prices change constantly.
Okay.
But.
And it can be rehabbed, I mean, it's been standing for fifty something years.
You know, all the.
No windows.
Yeah, and all the casework and all the valuables, you know, that could be resalvaged have been in that building years ago. And their district has spent money on a best abatement of that facility also. So they have invested some money to get it to the point that it is now to make it less expensive to come down. So, you know, understanding what abatement is left is small. But the cost of that is certainly unknown at this point exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, just there has not been an elementary bond, elementary focused bond passed in over sixty years. And I think this is a good opportunity, a good time and a good project to to consider. Jim Thompson, board member, anything, Jim, that you'd like to add or president?
You're muted, Mr. Thompson, you're muted.
You're muted.
How about that?
There you go.
Um, I think Ron summarized it very well. I think what we're trying to come up with here as the board, what we pushed out is come up with. Not only does this give our kids the a great learning environment. But we, there's a lot of flexibility into it because now we're getting into class sizes where a kindergarten class might be small. And we're not really locked in, so we can adjust over time. If we got bubble classes or things like that to 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 make it a good environment for all of them. And I think a couple key points were brought up about, you know, we like what we have here with a small class size and this and that. And some of those costs is, you know, if this doesn't pass, what happens? You know, I think the Plan B is one, the cost keeps on going up. And two, more so is like what was said, that it makes it difficult for us to provide everything. If we're putting more and more money into old structures that takes away. We just have less money to put into the educational aspect of it. Not that still education is our highest priority, but still, if you got to keep the boilers moving and everything else in the buildings. Repair roofs and do this and that, that all those things cost a lot. That's where, you know, we we want to maintain, be able to maintain over time. And grow on what we have right now instead of having to reduce if we if we're spending money on our, basically our infrastructure. And as been said, that old Kennedy building, the old high school. Yes, it didn't go through with the bond, it wasn't passed with the bond to take that down. Like I say, the eight hundred thousand, we've talked about that since I've been on board, I've been on the board, what, six, eight years? And we continue to talk about that, but that it's that cost associated with taking that thing down. Yes, we would love as a board to have that thing gone, but that's a big chunk of money to put out there. That is money coming from the district, it's not really going to kids' education. You know, trying to move things in the direction of educating our kids. And that is not, if we put eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, whatever it costs to do that, that's not educating kids. So I think the projects is a good project and it'll move. It'll bring forward, I think, a good environment when we bring new people in, new doctors. Or other professionals or people that want to stay around here. Like Ron said, you kind of go into Jefferson and stuff and they're they're an old building, you know, they're clean, but they're an old building. And, you know, not a real inviting thing to bring new families in. And, you know, here's where your your young children will be going to school. Like to have a better environment for them to to learn in.
Yep, thank you, Jim. And I also want to add, you know, we have the nineteen ninety nine building. And that is definitely a focus of our resources. And we're replacing all of the carpet in that building this summer for several hundred thousands of dollars. We are continuing to make improvements on that pool. And the moisture control in that building has been very expensive. We are looking at, we did the front entryway of that building. That building is a kind of stand up wall construction, which is very reliable on the caulking system that's put in there. So the weather doesn't infiltrate behind the walls. And we are starting the process of going around the building and taking the old caulk and putting it in. And that is a very expensive process. But the community has provided that building, you know, twenty years ago now. And it's it's held up really well. And we are investing a great deal of money in that building to maintain it and and keep it. As nice as it was on the day that the community moved into it. So as far as our resources available for operations over the next eighteen months, it's very focused on that building. And the board just bought a couple of buses for a few hundred thousand dollars aboard meeting us so we're go. And so there are expenditures for operations. And we have been good stewards of the facilities that we've had and replaced roofs since nineteen fifty four and sixty seven. Replace heating systems in some buildings when needed. And it's been done mainly by energy bonds that don't have to be voted on. And the savings of the transformation of heating systems and lighting systems. Those savings pay for roofs and so forth. So the district's been very creative with the maintenance and the stewardship of the buildings. But the but the facilities for elementary students is slipping behind. And this is a good time to review this project and consider. I know that the community is focused and should be about housing and, you know, development. There's a lot of things going on and I think this kind of project is good timing for, you know, what's happening in the community.
Mr. Storm. Can I just say one, one thing real quick? I think that I'm the only, there's maybe two other people on here right now that have children in the school district. And I think that would, what would help you is if you have a more detailed plan about the education. And how the kids are going to benefit from this bond. I I mean, I am totally on a board that that building needs to be tore down and, you know, adjustments need to be made to the other ones. But I think what you're going to run into is before you were superintendent, we shuffled kids around. And it was, you know, out there with the high school that, you know, we've got sixth grade to twelfth grade. But they won't be co-mingling and that's not the case. And you say that they're smaller class sized, but my son is at the high school. They're not really smaller, these kids are kind of still crammed together. So I think that that will help you if you if you're more detailed on what exactly these kids are going to benefit from. Not a vacant green space park and a middle school gym being built and a roof. Because nobody really cares about that, they want to know what their kids are going to benefit from.
I I think that's a really important point too, but roofs are important too. And the community hasn't provided a roof since nineteen ninety nine. And that's what communities do, they put roofs on buildings, they put furnaces and heaters in buildings too. And they upgrade and make sure that the facilities are conducive to education. But I think you're right, providing them an explanation how this impacts their students academically. Which includes the arts and extracurricular activities and being specific about that is a really good idea.
Yeah, I think that the Plan B with consolidating more schools and, you know, if you have to do that is a horrible idea. Because then you're just going to be overcrowded, then you're going to be like, hey, we need another building now, what are we going to do?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, Ron, you're right about the community to build roofs. The city council recently passed bond proposal to put roofs on the fire department, the city hall. We under, we understand infrastructure will need to be done, so I appreciate your presentation, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Mick, I I've got one question on on Jefferson School. The current heating system, does it have any kind of a makeup air system in it? Does it have any way of exchanging the air?
There there is, and not in every room. And that heating system is like the old Kennedy out in Parkdale. It's under the tiles, it's a water system, boiler system. But but there is some fresh air exchange that has was done a while ago. But but it's not in every room and the ventilation and the bathrooms in each classroom is very poor. And just by design of the building, we just couldn't get to all the spaces to to get air to them.
Because I thought last summer when I would run by that I would see windows open quite often in the classrooms.
Right.
That's I was asking, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Stormman.
Yes, sir.
This is Roger, we, you talked about school of choice. Are we losing students?
You know, students coming in and students going out, it's pretty close.
So we're now. This, how would this affect? Is this going to affect attracting more students in your opinion?
Well, you never want to make that claim because you can't, you have no control over that. But I've I've got to believe that declining enrollment in out county districts is hurt is hurting. Their ability for operations. So if if we can move ahead with good facilities and improve our academic offerings and performance. I think we've got the best chance in the county to survive and excel. So may it attract students. I think we've got a really good chance of attracting anybody moving new to the community. And we've continued to do pretty well with that. But, you know, these out county districts and I have a very loyal. Parents and community too, but it keeps them there. But you don't, you don't know when we, the pool was added and the new high school, I know statements, well, we build it, they will come, some did. But that's just a tough claim to make, Roger, but I think it it won't hurt us and could benefit us.
We, how do people find out? I'm just curious, so real quick, how do people find out? You talked about hiring teachers with multiple certifications. How do people find out that we have that?
I I attend job fairs, this year they're mostly virtual. And so, you know, Saginaw Valley, Grand Valley, Michigan State. And, you know, and when we need something specific, we start reaching out to university departments. And ask if there are anyone out there. We track our alumni really closely to see if they're in the teaching field and interested in coming home. So we do a lot of postings and places all over the state and local. And so we do the best we can with the recruiting. And sometimes you have to pay for steps to get an experienced teacher here, which could benefit students immediately. So we're willing to do that too.
Well, we're wanting to grow, we need young families. And that's why I was asking, how do we attract those young families? I don't have anything else, anybody have anything? Any other questions for Mr. Storm?
Just on your last point, Roger, two thousand sixteen feedback that we received is start communicating our story to the public. And not and not just to our parents and let the community know that that we're doing good things. And we're building good relationships with others. And so we've been really working hard on on doing that.
There's no, there's no doubt in my mind that good schools will attract young families. They want their children to have good schools and good education, so there's no doubt there at all, so for me anyway. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Storm?
I direct you to our website, it has very, a lot of detailed information related to the project. And like I said, we have some mailers going out soon. Thank you for your time, any other questions?
Here we go, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thompson, appreciate it.
Mr. Thompson.
Yep, thank you.
We'll move on to others, Heather, do you want to call the role? First of all, Heather, I want to ask you, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Uh, no, I don't.
Would you want to bring this up to date on Thursday's meeting and the qualification of the week, need to wear a mask or what is the deal?
Um, I will get with Kelly tomorrow and see if there is a COVID form that we need to fill out for the Ramsdale. But it will be regular, you know, wear masks, social distance, all of the regular. You know, COVID protocol will be in place when we meet on Thursday. I don't know that, do you know, I think you're muted then, do you know if there's a form that we need to fill out?
Yes, I spoke with Xavier late this morning. It's just the same as when we were meeting there this summer. So I will have Kelly send out a reminder to have you submit those forms to Xavier. The tape is still up, the council's going to be sitting on the floor in front of the stage. And just everything as it was before.
Okay, Heather, if you would like to move on to just ask the council if they have anything else and then move on to staff if you would.
Okay, sure, Councilmember Rockman.
Nope, nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Potemanski.
Actually, I got one, I was just in a meeting earlier. The Manassas Recreation Association, MRA, has just launched their online, their new website. With online registration. So you you're able to pick the the programs that you want, pay for them all online. So the new ones that are on right now is T-ball, machine pitch, little league. Spring soccer, adult run club, and then there's some future ones. Basketball camp and beach coed volleyball. So there's and a number of other different activities, there's some senior programs. Again, all accessible through the MRA online site. So that's really kind of, you know, moving into the twenty first century for us. That's it for me.
And. You wanted me to go to staff as well, Mayor?
I could just ask staff, do you have any other questions, any comments, concerns? I don't, I don't see any, so I guess I'm last.
Yes, you are.
Just a reminder, the meeting tomorrow night is at six P M, Ramsdale Theater.
Uh, not tomorrow, but Thursday.
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday night, not tomorrow night, Thursday night, six P M, we'll see everybody there.
Okay.
Going to adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.